Our College Meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Would ask everyone please stand for the invocation and then followed by the pledge of allegiance and posting of colors. Heavenly Father, we come before you this day thankful for the many blessings that we have in this country. We ask that you be with us as we, as members of this Board of Education and those who are here today to observe, work to try to improve the education in this county and in this school district. May our discussion be civil and may our decisions help to make our school system one of the best in the state of North Carolina. Pray that you'll be with all those who serve in our military forces. Watch over them, keep them safe in these times, be a blessing to them and their families. These things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank the color guard from EA Laney and the national anthem was played by the Ashley High School Band. If they could come forward, we should have a microphone around here someplace. Oh, you got it there? Okay. And if they would introduce themselves and, you know, tell us what instrument they played
My name is Noah Marnie. I'm a senior at Ashley.
I'm George Meyer III and I'm a senior at Ashley.
My name is John Reyna. I'm a senior at Ashley.
I'm Jav Krupa. I'm a junior at Ashley.
I'm Hunter Johnson. I'm a senior at Ashley.
I'm Arthur Sawyer. I'm a sophomore at Laney.
I'm Samantha Jones. I'm a senior at Laney.
I'm Seth Carr. I'm a junior at Laney.
I'm Samantha Mondello. I'm a junior at Laney.
Well, would y'all tell her you're right, please?
My name's Arthur Sawyer. I'm a sophomore at Laney and I am a chief master sergeant.
Cadet.
I'm a cadet major. My name is Samantha Jones and I'm a senior at Laney.
First Lieutenant Seth Carr, a junior at Laney.
First Lieutenant Samantha Mondello, junior at Laney.
And the band was under the direction of Mr. Robert Parker and the color guard is under the direction of Colonel Thomas Harrison Smith and Master Sergeant Bruce C. Thank you. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please? Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Cameron.
Here.
Lisa Isa.
Here.
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Bruce T. Shaw.
Here.
David L. Workman.
You have before you the agenda for this meeting. Are there any changes?
Item seven, closed session. The veto that is no longer valid.
Move for adoption of the agenda as revised.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have the minutes of the March 7th meeting and the April 4th meeting. Do we need to consider those separate or do them together?
We can do them together.
All right. And I hear a motion that we accept the minutes of March 7th and April 4th of 2017.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is approved. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed 2017-2018 budget. So I guess what we would do is open the floor.
We have some folks who've signed up, Mr. Chair.
And I will start with them and then anyone else who wants to speak to the budget. I would remind you it's three minutes and comments should not address any particular individual or a particular school.
Dr. Hollard, if you're timekeeper.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lenora Young and I am a member of the New Hanover County Gifted Advisory Council. I address you today as concerned member of the council and as a parent of a gifted student at New Hanover High School. I know that you are currently facing some very difficult budget decisions for the upcoming 2017-2018 school year with five proposed AIG specialist position cuts to the budget, requiring K through eight schools with less than 400 students to share specialists. I would like to strongly advocate for the continuation of a full-time AIG specialist at all elementary and middle schools in New Hanover County with current formula of one position per school. We value and appreciate the board's support in this area over the years. It has made a difference in our county's ability to nurture and grow gifted students for K through eight with a focused effort. Our gifted students enter middle school prepared and ready for the challenge. They are responding and winning in many areas academically and feed the growing programs at our high schools in the areas of honors and AP courses, CTE courses, STEM, marine science, international baccalaureate, lyceum, and the new technical high school. With the proposed cuts for gifted specialists with the new formula, many smaller economically disadvantaged schools may be impacted and I am concerned that the gifted children who need a full-time specialist the most will be underserved. The everyday learning environment for these students is more challenging and they require daily interaction with a specialist and others who have similar needs as themselves in order to fully establish cognitive relationships and to facilitate their academic, intellectual, social, and emotional growth. And we know this model works because we have gifted students who have come through schools such as these with full-time specialists and have gone on to do great things at the high school level and college. I know because my child was a product of an economically disadvantaged elementary school at the time. New Hanover County Schools has benefited greatly from the hard work of gifted education specialists and partnering teachers who stretch students' minds to turn dreams into reality because someone other than mom and dad believed in them and understood their needs. Here are a few of the many accomplishments of our students this year. We have a national qualifier for the math counts middle school competition. We had over 400 elementary kids participate in Science Olympiad. State math winners. Science Olympiad state winners at the middle school and high school level. Regional high school math competition winners at the middle school and high school level. State winners for writing in the young authors competition. State winners in the PTA reflections competition. Eighteen students invited to attend governor's school with half of those in the arts. So many of these opportunities are only afforded through the gifted specialists partnering with our teachers. So the GAC, the Gifted Education, the Gifted Advisory Council has just one recommendation for the board this year. We ask that you please continue to support full-time specialists at each K through eight school and advocate for our program. Thank you.
Pleasant good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Martin, off the class course taking part of the school system, school year. I've come here to talk about one, two things about budget, about pay raises. There was some news about school board members getting a pay raise this year and people may not know this, but when elected officials like school boards, county commissioners, those in line give a pay raise, in the state of North Carolina, the fine fees based on 1% are the fine fee. So I'd like to ask you, if you go up on your pay raises, please keep it as low as possible so people, other citizens in the future who might want to run for public office such as school board would have pay so much of fine fee. Late 90s, school board members get a pay raise and I remember those days quite well and just want to bring that to your attention. Number two, capital improvements of middle schools. I know you said not Mitchell School, but I just want to say the name of the street, by 10, 10th Street Middle School. And if you can work on putting new bleachers and upstairs, new seats and on 10th Street, it's Williston, I'm sure you know, but I'm supposed to say that, but I'd like to ask you if you would take on the capital improvements of middle schools. If you would, contact the coaches of New York County Schools to see what needs they need for the upcoming budget. Thank you so much for all you do for New Hanover County Schools and hope you all have a good
I want to begin by thanking you for hiring me this year to help nurture students' potential and provide professional development opportunity for teachers to help them recognize characteristics of gifted learners and provide appropriate instruction. I moved my family here last August from across the state and specifically chose New Hanover County for its commitment to gifted education. In fact, when I attended the state gifted conferences, I was always impressed with this district's progressive approach to gifted education and I'm very proud and humbled to be able to work in the district. Our work at Forest Hills Global Elementary School, which is a Title I school with a diverse population of learners, which includes students who are economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and culturally ethically diverse. In fact, these students are who we are speaking about when we talk about the underrepresented population according to the NCAIG standards and our own local AIG plan. AIG specialists are integral part of their schools. They provide weekly nurturing lessons to all students in grades K-2. They collaborate with teachers to provide professional, we provide professional development and differentiated instruction to advanced learners. We co-teach along with teachers in the teacher's classroom, pulling out students to work in small groups with us, and we may be involved with school initiatives. For example, in my school, I run a chess club before school and I help coach the Science Olympiad team after school. I've served as the science fair coordinator, have provided professional development for teachers on the importance of computer science in the curriculum, run the hour of code for the school where every student was involved in computer coding, and collaborated with UNCW to provide a STEM night for students. And I'm co-chair on the school improvement committee. Additionally, I'm collaborating with Food Corps to write grants for our school to develop and sustain our community garden. Next year, I hope to extend STEM opportunities by providing more professional development for teachers and STEM experiences for students which supplement the curriculum, including robotics club. If I was shared between schools, this would be impossible to do. As a full-time teacher of the school, I have the opportunity to develop relationships and trust with teachers and administration, which is an essential component of a successful gifted program. I also get to know the students in the school on a personal level and am better able to help teachers identify students because when we have an underrepresented population, it can be very difficult. They do not present themselves the same. In conclusion, I believe numbers only tell one part of the story. We are a school with less than 400 students. However, as I like to tell my students, fairness does not mean everyone gets the same thing. Fairness means everyone gets what we need. I believe our students and teachers need the presence of a full-time specialist in schools to continue recognizing and developing the talent we have and the gifted students of today are our leaders of tomorrow.
Tara Strickland.
Mr. Chairman, how many people are signed up?
One more.
Good evening. Good evening. I would just like to say as a parent of a gifted child that's in the program at one of the elementary schools, it's made a real impact packed in his life, in my life. They've done an outstanding job and I just feel like it would be, it would just be unjust to cut this program or these specialists for the upcoming kids in this Title I school. I can't say enough good things about it and what it's done for my child and I'd just hate to see that cut and if you could find some other way to cut other plans, that would be appreciative.
Miss Teen Newmark. Did I mispronounce the last name? Oh, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So thankful for all of you and your devotion and many of you have been serving our school board for years and the impact in our community and our schools is truly, truly remarkable and I thank you for that. I am here reinforcing what the prior people have said about the AIG cuts. I have a son at Alderman Elementary who was greatly benefited from this AIG program. He also is a type one diabetic and having part of a nurse at school has not affected him because he's there fundamentally for education. As a Title I school, Alderman, I think, needs the AIG support more than schools that aren't Title I. I think that the schools that are 400 in population or less shouldn't be penalized for their smaller district. We love our district. We love our small school, but to cut from them seems like an injustice to me and I just would really like for you to reconsider that. I also noticed where Alderman is getting a $40,000, a $40,000 allocation for two pilot innovative classes and I haven't been able to really figure out what that is. I've asked our AIG teacher, but perhaps maybe one class and keep our AIG full-time support. I know that Ms. Turner is able to nurture K through third grade and identify. I also have a high school we're now in ninth grade who was at Snipes in kindergarten. He was not identified until we moved and he was in Alderman at fourth grade and it has helped him to excel all through honors programs at Hanover High now. So I just think the impact would be felt on many levels. I feel like the voice of such a small school might get snuffed out if we don't stand up for the smaller districts. I know y'all work hard and you're full of wisdom and I just hope that you would reconsider this and maybe be able to keep the AIG programs full-time, especially at Alderman. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is recognition of achievement.
Good evening, everyone. So glad to see you tonight. Our first recognition for this evening is for our top participating schools for our annual Jump Rope for Heart and we are blessed to have Ms. Jane Law with us from the American Heart Association who will make those presentations.
Good evening. Thank you so much, parents and children, for coming out. This is Keith Cummins. He's going to help us, our vice president. Children, I would like to just share a quick story with you because I think this year it applies so much to the American Heart Association. There was an old man who was probably walking down on Wrightsville Beach and he was picking up starfish and throwing them back in the water and a little boy walked up to him and said, "Why are you doing that?" And he said, "If I don't get these starfish back in the water, they'll die." And the little boy looked at him and he saw the millions of starfish out there and he said, "Oh, my goodness. What does it matter? You can't save all these starfish." And the old man looked at the little boy and he said, "It matters to this one." And you know what, my friends, for American Heart, every child that you help, it matters to this one. Jumping Hoops for Heart is about kids helping kids in our community. Heart disease is the number one killer in the United States for men and women and number two for children. This year, we asked our students to do one more thing. We asked them to take a health pledge because the fact is that heart disease is 80% preventable. So we asked our kids to send out what we called an E-card to take a health challenge and then to send it out to 10 grownups that they loved or more. The E-card allowed us to capture those numbers and they were asked to do one of the following. They were asked to either to drink more water than sugary drinks, to do more 60 minutes of exercise a day to focus on, and to focus on eating a fruit or vegetable. Simple things that will prevent heart disease. In our first year, I'm so excited, in New Hanover County, we had 2,650 E-cards sent out. So that's pretty phenomenal for the beginning to spread the word of we can prevent this disease. As educators and parents, I think we're all aware of how actions speak louder than words. And so today I would love to honor our students who took the challenge and also went out and tried to, who helped us, our top life-saving students, we call them, who helped us to fund more research to help those who have heart disease. And I've also, and I'd like to recognize our coordinators who work so very hard to put the program together in your school, teach your children, and help them learn how to prevent heart disease. And also our principals who we know, we can't do it without you. We always need your support. And I'd like to, and what we're going to do is we're going to name our school and call you up and we'd love you to stay here so we can get some pictures. And I'd also like to begin by thanking Ms. Quattlebaum. She was our very first person in the county to take our health pledge and she spread it throughout the school, the importance of good health. And I would also like to thank Dr. Markley who took the time out of his busy schedule to help the kids at Anderson play basketball game in their celebration of life. And the kids are still talking about how they beat the grownups. So we just want to say thank you. He's really a good basketball player. But we just want to say thank you because you know what? These two individuals, we know they have a lot on their plates, but they took time out to support our children and it was just, you know, touched my heart. We also piloted a program this year. I was asked if there was a school kicking off the end of February and that was Murrayville. And what we did is for every 10 E-cards their children sent out, we would donate a jump rope to a school of their choice. And so Nicole Collin of Murrayville took this pilot program and made a huge success, not only by saving lives, but by donating 100 ropes to Sunset Elementary. And so we will do that this evening at the very end of the presentation. So at this point, I want to begin by recognizing our top school, our top life-saving school, which was Partially Elementary. Chris, are you here? I see you over there. And also, we would love to pull, come have your, let me go on one second here. John Peter Myers, are you here? All right, give him a big hand. This is our top lifesaver here. He does some serious work. And is Dr. Robin Hamilton here? Please come up. Our second school. And our top lifesaver is Anderson Elementary. Our top lifesavers are not here tonight, but I just want to recognize them. Gabriella and Alexandra Lego Marcino. And our coordinator who has been doing this for 16 years, Curtis Fallon, are you here? And I know Ms. Holland couldn't make it, but Ted Mullins is here also, so please come up. Thank you so much. And our, our third top school is, and this is only his second year doing this, so that's pretty awesome, Eaton Elementary School. Fisher Rogers is our top, come on Fisher, our top student, top lifesaver. Give him a hand, Fisher. You are the man. Awesome. Bobby Chu. And our principal. Heather Byers, are you here? I thought I saw her. There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And now we're going to go in order, not any in particular way. Alderman Elementary, Ella Gardner, are you here? Ella, thank you so much. Look at these, look at these lifesavers here. Ella Gardner, Jonathan St. Barry, and we've got Kate Tahoe. There you go. Hey, thank you so much. Blair Elementary, I don't think Amy is here tonight, Kristen Jackson. And they just kicked off, so they do not have a person yet today. Castle Hain Elementary, we've got Keegan Stark, is she here? Keegan, all right. Kirsten Wilderbeer, and we've got Cindy Bliss. College Park Elementary, I know Doug Smith is not here tonight. Is Maria Madison here? There she is. Thank you so much for, thank you so much. College Road, College Road Early Childhood Center, we do not have a student. College Road, College Road Early Childhood Center, we do not have a student, Sam Krenikens? Not here. We'll, we'll get him here. Okay. Forest Hills Elementary, is Amory Gregory here? Not. Okay, I know, is, oh, there's Amory, all right. And I know that Morgan's here, I saw her come in, Morgan. Michael Amory and Bonnie Hall. Holly Shelter Middle School, Kyle Williams. And they did a pay-to-play, so they do not have a student, I saw Kyle come in. He's coming. Okay, and Ms. Jane Kiker? Back here, come on up. We gotta get, get you up here. Thank you so much. Holly Tree Elementary, I know Leanne is not here, but I think Laura Holliday is here? The principal, and Anna Nikolosty? Anna, I just probably killed your name, didn't I? There you go. Hey, Anna, thank you so much. And we're gonna, okay. Myrtle Grove, Bill Williams, I know he's not here, he did a pay-to-play, but Sam Highsmith, are you here tonight? Awesome, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And we've got Park Pine Valley Elementary School, Reese Hooks, I saw you sitting back there with Ms. Ann. Ann Suddles, and we've got Rebecca Obrand here. Come on up. They're saying if you can't get here.
Jump rope.
Jump rope, she did some serious jumping here. All right. Okay, Wrightsville Elementary, we've got two people, Alicia Robinson and Bella Devine are two top fundraisers, and Chris is not able to be here tonight, but divorce over And we've got Early College High School, Anita Brown. Are you up there? I knew she's coming. Okay, Regina, Regina Wooton, I know we got a crowd. This is our only high school, she started a new movement here. We're all excited. And Rachel Freeman, School of Engineering, we've got Philip Pitstick and Susan Sellers. I will get theirs for them. And finally, last but not least, we want to call up Murrayville Elementary School, the top fundraiser was Gabrielle Barfield. Come on up. Nicole Collin. And Ms. D was not here, but Ms. Stein, Ms. Steinhever is here. And I think we're going to present some ropes here, so we've got some special kids coming up with, with you. Okay. Brylee Cullen, Anute Long, Colby Isinkin, I'm ruining your names, I'm so sorry, Haley and Hayden Laner, Lanier. This is Haley Lanier. Awesome, you guys, you got it, I've got this, can you all lift these ropes? Holy smokes. And we have Sunset Elementary, Micah Hendricks, he just kicked off. And Diego Lahaki, are you here? Hey, come on up, this is awesome. So, we're going to try, this is our first time ever doing this, but we're going to try and present. Okay, these children worked really, really hard to earn, they sent out 100 E-cards to, to earn jump ropes to give to you all, so. So you're going to give the jump ropes? It's kids helping kids. I'd like to, I'd like to, finally, heart disease is 80% preventable, we have started a movement here, so let's keep the momentum going in New Hanover County, each year and one child at a time. Thank you so much.
Our next recognition is for the recipient of the North Carolina Farm Bureau's Agriculture in the Classroom Teacher of the Year Award. And, can you all hear me? Our next recognition, okay, is for the North Carolina Farm Bureau Agriculture in the Classroom Teacher of the Year Award, and we have with us tonight, Michelle Reedy, who's the director of the North Carolina Farm Bureau program, and I'm going to ask her to come forward to present the award to Ms. Titzel.
On behalf of North Carolina Farm Bureau, with the support from New Hanover County Farm Bureau, we're here tonight to acknowledge a teacher leader that's in your school district. As some of you may or may not know, Farm Bureau in North Carolina maintains a nonprofit organization that supports an educational program called Ag in the Classroom, which carries out the mission of promoting the importance of agriculture to all pre-K through 12th grade, public and private school teachers and students across the state. For 32 years, Ag in the Classroom has developed research-based curriculum, hosted interactive K-8 teacher workshops on the farm, provides educational grants for ag-related projects in schools, and offers a book of the month program. We also mentor Kenan Fellows and manage many other programs to produce fun and effective ag education across the state. Each year, North Carolina Farm Bureau Ag in the Classroom program also honors a practicing North Carolina teacher who emphasizes ag concepts across the various areas of study. Agriculture is an important part of everyone's life, as it sustains us all, from the clothes we wear, to the food we eat, to the fuel we use for transportation. Ag issues can support the teaching of all academic disciplines, as it applies to many historical and current issues. Recognizing this, tonight, we want to honor one of your best teachers from Roland Greys Middle School, Ms. Stephanie Titzel. We have one for you over here too, as well. Stephanie was among many applicants, and she was selected as the 2017 North Carolina Farm Bureau Ag in the Classroom Teacher of the Year. So along with all of that, she is going to be recognized at our annual meeting this December in Greensboro. She'll also attend the National Ag in the Classroom Conference in Kansas City, Missouri, on June 20th through the 23rd. She's also been asked to work as a teacher trainer for some of our summer programs that we have, and she's also encouraged to host an Ag in the Classroom professional development training in her school district, which is going to happen on August the 3rd. So Stephanie, on behalf of North Carolina Farm Bureau and New Hanover County Farm Bureau, we thank you for all your service that you've done for us.
Yes, and if I could just recognize our New Hanover County Farm Bureau board members that are here. Bill Goldner and Ed Vosnok. Bill Goldner is our treasurer, board treasurer, and Ed Vosnok is our vice president. And also, I'd like to do a shout-out to Mr. Broadfoot. He's been extremely supportive of Stephanie, her principal, and we really, really appreciate that. And I'm Melissa Height, also a member of the Farm Bureau Board. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this here.
I just want to tell you that Stephanie was one of my fifth grade students.
Well, tonight is the night for superstar teachers, because next, we will recognize the winner of the 2017 North Carolina Outstanding Teacher in Gifted Education. Ms. Tara Mulvey is the AIG teacher at Winter Park Elementary. She's been teaching for 18 years. Ms. Mulvey was presented the 2017 Outstanding Teacher in Gifted Education Award at the 43rd Annual North Carolina Association for Gifted and Talented Conference in Winston-Salem this past March. So we have Ms. Mulvey here, and if, your principal, I think I saw Mr. Paul Slovic, and your family, would you please stand up, so we could recognize and congratulate you for being associated with this superstar teacher of ours. 21 of our students from New Hanover County schools have been selected to attend the 2017 session of the very prestigious Governor's School of North Carolina. As I say your names, students, please come forward to be recognized, and please remain standing until everyone has been called. For choral music, we have Virginia Hawkins of New Hanover High School. Also for choral music, from Hogarth High School, Sonia Shaw. Also for choral music, Karen Walter from New Hanover High School. For dance, Hannah Schneider from Ashley High School. Also in the area of dance, from Hogarth High School, Laura Turlington. For English, Brianna Kunliff of Ashley High School. Also for English, Emily Gray from Ashley High School. For English, Caitlin Lanier from Laney High School. For English, Sophia Miller of Isaac Bear Early College High School. For English, Colby Stoner of Ashley High School. For English, Allison Carpenter from Al-, Laney High School. For instrumental music, Benjamin Davis of Laney High School. Also for instrumental music, Riley Hook from Hogarth High School. For instrumental music, Margaret Poit, Poit of Hogarth High School. For instrumental music, from Laney High School, Melanie Su. For mathematics, Brett Williams of Wilmington Early College High School. For science, Sam Johnson from New Hanover High School. For French, Jeremy Carballo-Penita from Ashley High School. For French, Gabriella Martinez-Hernandez from Ashley High School. For theater, Karen James of New Hanover High School. We gotta love moms. For theater, Chloe Mason from New Hanover High School. And while the students gather for photo, would all the families of these outstanding students please stand so we can recognize you? It's a parent moment, as one of the parents says. All the parents are good?
I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, and our last recognition for this evening goes to a very talented athlete from Laney High School. Kevin Saravia was recently named the Division for a State Wrestling Champion for the second time. Kevin finished, that's great, go on, clap. Just a little bit about Kevin. Kevin finished with a 6'2" record at the High School Nationals in Virginia Beach to earn All-American status. He recorded wins over three state champions, including three two-time state championships along the way. Kevin is the first Laney wrestler to earn All-American status at this prestigious tournament. He's coached by Mr. Dan Willis, so at this time, we would ask that Kevin and his coach, would you please come forward? So that- would you please come forward so that we may recognize you? Over here, well, and Ms. DeCharme, would you come forward? Did you let Kevin know we're very proud of him? He's wrestling? Okay. Thanks, Mr. DeCharme, and go Bucks!
If anybody's standing up would like to have a seat, we have a few. Alright, the next item on our agenda is called to the audience with Agenda Items, and no one has signed up, so we will move on to the next item, which is Item Eight, Administrative Personnel Administrative Recommendations, Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
Okay, we have one administrative recommendation. This is for an interim Assistant Principal, Arlene Suggs, to serve at Pine Valley Elementary beginning April seventeenth until the end of the school year. Ms. Suggs retired last year from Parsley Elementary School, where she served as an Assistant Principal.
Hear a motion to accept it?
Certainly.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Is she here?
Arlene, I don't know. Her principal is Ms. Ophgrin, and she'll be happy to have the help, because her Assistant Principal, of course, you approved last month for another position.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, Item B, Administrative Contract Renewals, Appendix B, Dr. Markley.
Okay, I'm gonna read the principals whose contracts are up for renewal and their current assignment, and we'll ask that the board approve the list once I'm done.
Okay.
Heather Byers, Eaton Elementary, Rebecca Ophgrin, Pine Valley, Krista Holland, Anderson, Sam Cantrowitz, College Road Early Childhood, Patrick McCarty at Ashley, Susan Sellers, Freeman Elementary, Steve Sullivan, Hoggart, Ronald Valines, Williston, Regina Wooton, Wilmington Early College.
You've heard the list read. Do I hear a motion, we accept it?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Alright, I have two supervisors that I'd like to recommend. Tim McCoy, Instruction and Arts Education, and Donna Sloan, AIG.
No for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Last one, Program Coordinator, Colleen Pate, whose current assignment is Isaac Bear Early College.
No for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Is that it?
That's it.
Alright, next item on our agenda is Report for Head Start. Mr. Shell.
As part of our monthly report, we have the demographics that are in your packet, no significant changes from that. Additionally, we have an expenditure report, and we are an April thirty year-in for purposes of Head Start. And as a reminder to everyone, it's a program for three and four-year-olds. It's federally funded. We have two-hundred-and-sixty children in the program. We make a difference every day in advancing them, so they'll be successful when they get into the older grades. As far as your expenditure report is concerned, this is eleven months ending. We have a one-point-nine-five-eight-million-dollar budget. A lot of details in there that we go over every month. I won't, unless there are questions, I won't go through that, but you can see that we have spent ninety percent of the funds through the eleven-twelfths of the year. Ms. Miles is here, if you have specific questions. We try to bring you something new every month, so that you get a sense of what we're doing and why we're doing it and how we're doing it. And so, tonight, we're going to introduce you to some of the parents that have children in the program. I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon Smiles.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our parents, that are parents of Johnson Pre-K Center. First, we have Ms. Amanda, Ms. Donetta, and Ms. Brittany Carmody. Brittany Carmody, it is her second year serving on Policy Council, which is the program governing, third, third, yours, you started with me, okay. Third year, she serves as chairperson currently, so she will have lots of stories to share with us tonight. Donetta, it is her first year serving on Policy Council, which is governing Board for Johnson Pre-K Center. And Amanda's second year, serving on council with us. So, I'm gonna let them take over from here, so.
Thank you. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to come and share my experience about the Head Start program and how it has enriched our lives, both me and my husband, and definitely for my kids. When we came to Wilmington, we were McKinney-Vento status, and this program just helped us in so many ways, and I just kinda have this to keep me focused, but the program, you know, helped my husband and I, as parents, financially, because we did not have to have daycare, which wouldn't have given our children what this program's given us anyways, but it did help me and my husband financially, and it helped us with resources. We're two years later. My son was in Johnson Pre-K last year, and then my daughter's there this year. My son's now at Forest Hills Global Elementary, and my daughter's three, started, she's four now, but when she entered in the fall last year, she was three. So, she'll go to Johnson Pre-K again next year, hopefully. But the program has helped us with resources, and we're no longer McKinney-Vento status, so I really give the program a lot of credit for that, helping us to find resources to get out of that status. And it's helped my kids in a lot of ways. One, my son, with the health prevention that they have at the Johnson Pre-K, my son had some dental issues that we were unaware of, and, you know, when we were in the situation that we were in, we didn't stay on top of those kind of things the way that we probably should have, because we had bigger fish to fry as far as what we needed in our family. And so, the program helped us to focus on things that we would not have necessarily been as focused on. For my son, it was dental. For my daughters, it's her vision. They actually caught those two things. For him, it was dental. For her, it's vision, and she now wears glasses, and we caught it really early, so I think it's gonna make a big difference in her life, something that we may not have even noticed had she not been in the program. Another thing that I love about the Head Start, or the Johnson Pre-K, is the diet, that it's really helped us to shape our kids' diet. That was a really hard thing for us to tackle, and being that the school doesn't allow outside food, and that they have, well, at Forest Hills they do now, but not the Pre-K. So, it really helped us to get them, him especially. This one's been a good eater, but he was not so much a good eater, and it forced us to not send, you know, junk food lunches and things like that, and it really helped us to shape his diet in more of a way that it should be. And so, those are some really good things that have come from the program. And then, the structure and routine of just going in, taking your folder out, putting it into a basket, washing your hands, sitting down, and having a routine, I think, has really, really prepared him to be a kindergartner. Well, I can tell you that it has. He, he's doing super well in kindergarten, and I just feel like that he had a leg up from going to the Johnson Pre-K, and then her too. She'll spend two years there, and I just think that the program's just a great program. It's helped our family in so many ways. And then, another way is that it's helped us, as parents, to have guidelines as to what we need to be doing educationally with our kids. And for these reasons, I just hope that you keep the program going, because it's made a big difference in our lives.
Good evening. My name's Donna Chino, and my son is considered a three at Dorothy B., and this is my first year on the Policy Council, and so I'm starting to learn a little bit of program operations. I just wanna give a little bit of before and after, as far as my son and how he's doing. Prior to him starting the Pre-K program, we had, you know, a few things behavior-wise that was kinda going on with him, so I was a little concerned with that. And now, he's able to actually adjust in a classroom environment. He's able to regulate his emotions a little bit better, because he has the interaction with other kids that he didn't have prior to that. He's able to, you know, regulate and explain his emotions and his feelings, and actually take a breather and, you know, breathe, and then tell me, you know, what's going on, whereas before, it wasn't exactly like that. I was concerned a little bit with speech problems, and he's been able to more or less get a little bit of therapy, so to speak, in regards to, you know, we never really had that knowledge, because Dorothy B. has been, you know, letting us know a little bit of resources that they have in the community, and kinda pointing me in the direction that I'm not, I didn't have any knowledge of. He also has been able to have, you know, the interaction with other kids, and he has just flourished tremendously in this program that he wouldn't have otherwise, so I'm very grateful for this program. He's been able to just kind of get to know the kids, and overall, just relax and enjoy and have fun as a kid. You know, typical three-year-olds don't think of, you know, as far as schedule. Most people kinda think of a three-year-old just kinda get up and do their thing, but he's more or less just had a structure, and it's a school environment where he's able to go in and read books that, you know, most parents don't think of. As far as, you know, access to community resources and things for our family, the teachers more or less guide us in different ways that we wouldn't think of, as far as, you know, different community resources, as well as, you know, being able to learn the different foods and fruits and vegetables that, you know, most people don't think of. We just, as parents, give them what they want, you know? And more or less, it's kinda like a pick or choose, and instead of finding different ways to get to where we need to go, you know, Dorothy B. has given us that outlet and different tips and whatnot. This program has really helped me and my son come together as a whole. There are different things that we never thought of that are actually really good for us. We're strengthening our family with different things, and I can't stress enough what this program has done for us. Overall, the teachers and everyone, and resource counselors and different things have just been amazing for us, and I really don't know where we would be without it. So, I just wanted to express that, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Carmody. I've had the pleasure for all three of my children to attend Johnson. My youngest right now is three. This is his first year. I've seen a lot of change in him from where he started from with his behavior, his words, from the safe hands and everything. A lot of things that I do notice about it is, you know, the teachers there, they have a tremendous impact on them. They work hard to make sure that your child is getting the education, the skills and everything that they need. My middle child, she's there now, she's four years old. When she first started there, she wouldn't talk, she would not make friends, she just was just in the shell by herself. We thought that it was something that she had going on with her speech, maybe to where she couldn't pronounce words, but, you know, I tell them she talks at home all the time. Mr. Nash, who her teacher was, he started to work with her on, just started off with just sounds, letter, and he took his time with her. When I tell you my baby has blossom, she came out of her shell, she talked, she's one of the main talkers in her class. She just comes home and tells me everything about her day, she's so excited. A lot of times, I work eleven-hour shifts, so I don't really get the time to spend with them like that. So, what they are benefiting from Johnson, I can see that. To the reading programs, they have the Razor Reader, that they send the red bags home with the children. My oldest daughter, she was there last year, she just went to kindergarten, she's at Gregory. I mean, she just blew everyone out the window. She was reading her red bags, and when she got to kindergarten, it was just her sight words and everything, and, you know, I worked with her, but a lot of that, you know, I had to dedicate, it came from Johnson. From the cognitive skills to the motor, the language, the maturity, the growth from my children, it's just been wonderful. A lot of times, things get hard, times are hard, and from the home visits, when the teachers do come, and I can say, you know, well, hey, you know, maybe we can't get out and go do as much as we can to, you know, interfere with my children. They gave us the passes to libraries, to the aquarium, anything that's going to help. They sent, you know, from the packets coming home to prepare them for the next grade, it's just wonderful. It's been three long years I've been with them, and I've had the chance to shadow with Ms. Shannon and other board members, and it's just been great. And I just really hope that everyone could just see the impact that Johnson's had on not just my children. I can speak for friends and relatives as well, and that we can keep this program going.
Ms. Graham, would you like to say anything?
It's just lovely to hear these.
It's lovely to hear the impact that our staff is making each and every day, and thank you for getting up here and sharing, that was awesome. We appreciate you and love our partnership together.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Thanks to everyone who came and told us about the program. Excuse me. Next item is all for information. Policies for first reading, Policy 1100, Mission, Vision, Goal. Policy 1660, Student Scholarship for Future Teachers. And Policy 9000, School Community Relations, Appendix E. Ms. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. The Mission, Vision, and Goals policy, the revisions there come from the strategic plan, so we just wanted to ensure that it was completed for our policy manual. And it says that goals will be established annually, and I think we do that, so that would be ready for second reading next month. The next policy, 1660, the Board of Education Scholarship Policy, I'm asked- The next policy, 1660, the Board of Education Scholarship policy, I'm asking Mr. Bullard if he will explain the insertions to this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. The main change was to clarify in the second bullet there that the scholarship is to be for a classroom teacher because a question was raised as to whether a person could receive the scholarship and go into a position such as guidance counselor or social worker that may technically be considered a teacher under the statutes but wasn't a classroom teacher. And the board wanted to clarify that for future scholarships, in order to get forgiveness of the loan, that they had to actually serve as a classroom teacher. And the other, the other changes were at the bottom of the first page, because the board had originally decided it was gonna have a committee interview the candidates, and then later decided that the entire board would do the interviews. There was some extra language that should've been deleted earlier. And then at the very beginning of the policy, I took the liberty to insert a clause that said that the scholarship in the future is subject to appropriate funding from the county. Because even though you expect the county to continue funding it, there's no guarantee. I didn't think you wanted to have a policy that required you to offer a scholarship if the county didn't in the future fund it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bullard. So that is for consideration for the June meeting. The final first reading policy is 9000. And Mrs. Qualebaum, if you'd like to explain this one, please.
Yes, ma'am. We added a paragraph to reinforce the board's commitment to community partnerships. And the addition strengthened the board's stance and desire to encourage businesses and community partnerships within our district, as well as it reinforces our plans to hear from some of these partnerships in the future. And for next month, we are planning to have Montith Construction and Williston present about their unique partnership.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so those are for first reading only. And of course, if anyone has any comments from the board or the community, we certainly appreciate knowing your suggestions or questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Superintendent's report.
Two quick things. Tomorrow at 11:30, we will have a luncheon for the students who have been accepted to the CTE School out at the North Campus. Exciting opportunity to meet those students who are going to open that school in the fall.
And it's in the BBNT auditorium.
Correct. Second one, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. So let me publicly thank all of those folks for the hard work they do every day in all of our schools, from Pre-K all the way up to our students at our early colleges. So if you see a teacher, tell her thank you, or him, this is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Rather than I thank them. Say it.
That is it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consensus items. Personnel, appendix F. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Would request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
So moved.
So moved. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Budget amendments, appendix G. Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board's approval of these amendments, but I did wanna point out in capital outlay, this includes a transfer of funds from College Park and Northeast Elementary Projects, where we had both of those come in under bid or under budget, to Blair to cover the contracts that you would be awarding later in the agenda. So I wanted to make sure that you saw that.
And that's related to bond funds, right?
Yes, from two, from two of the bond projects to another bond project.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Will you accept that before?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Change of school assignment, appendix H. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board ask that you release these students to the neighboring school district as a matter of routine.
Here a motion, we approve it.
So moved.
Have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One question. This parental preference, are these charter schools students, or what is...
That's a very good question, Mr. Hayes. This is a situation where the student is, has been accepted already into the Brunswick County Schools, and it came to my office and appears to be a very legitimate request. It's more than a, it comes across as a parental request, but it's actually a little bit more than that. It's a, it's a safety issue to some degree, so we're asking if you approve it.
Well, I just noticed that the number...
Yes, sir. Usually, it's just people who are employed, and sometimes we get those. We generally don't accept those because you, with the board, we don't, because we're overcrowded. But the neighboring school districts, if the school board will accept them, we generally bring them to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All business. Policies for second reading, policy 1320, agenda format, policy 1350, community participation at Board of Education meetings, policy 3410, contract administration, policy 4610, purchasing administration, and policy 5020, facility design, appendix I. Ms. Nichols.
Thank you again, Mr. Higgins. For second reading, policies from the 1000 series, both these policy go hand in hand in that we talked about consolidating the call to the, and it will be at the beginning of the part of the agenda. And so anyone who wishes to speak can sign up and do not have to address the agenda item or non-agenda item. And then the policy 1320 is the agenda that had to be, the format that had to be altered. And if you'll notice, we don't have closed session in here because there is not always a closed session, and therefore, it gets a little confusing. So the only time that it will be part of the agenda is when there is a closed session, and it will be cited as the legal reference. So let's take these two together right now, if you will.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I...
It is approved.
Yeah, I think that Mrs. Qualebaum and Mrs. Adams will certainly clarify that with any person who calls or wants to sign up so that they would be abreast of any change. The next policy is from Mr. Anderson, 5020, and that's facility design.
The, this policy came to you a few board meetings ago at the request of the New Hanover... The Soil and Water Conservation Group. They're asked that you consider low-impact development among the many other ordinances and guidelines that we consider in our purchase of property and constructing schools. So the, this is the second reading, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Let's go ahead and accept that one separately as well.
Okay. And asked to accept that one, so 5020, facility design. Do I hear a motion? We accept it.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you, sir. The next two policies come from Mrs. Small's division. So she can explain 3410 and then tell us why we have 4610 as 3610.
Thank you. Both of these policies were presented last month, and they include changes in dollar amounts for either bids that need to come to the board or contract approval. The changes are more in line with current law.
Move for approval.
Have a motion. Here a second.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Higgins, in reviewing this further, I did notice one thing. On the new 3610, on the second page, there is a reference to a statute that has to do with taking bids for bottled water and juice. That statute has actually been repealed, so my recommendation is to delete reference to that statute and delete reference to bids for bottled water and juice, which is on about the third paragraph on the second page.
I move that we amend the motion to include suggestions of the attorney.
Is that okay? All right. Yes, sir.
Mary Hazle, could you explain what the change is, what we are today, and what this contract will change it to, please?
Sure. For the contract admin, which one first, the 3410?
3410, please.
For the, currently contracts exceeding 50,000 have to be brought to the board for services, and we are changing that to 300,000 for services, construction or repair work. Items between 100 and 300,000 will be approved by the superintendent, and items below 100,000 can be approved by the budget director for those. The change orders, we also increased the level of when change orders have to come to the board, and also would match the same as the contract total. So if a contract was approved below the amounts the board need approval, but then a change order caused it to go above that, we'd have to bring it back to the board. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you.
I have one quick question then.
Certainly.
Will we get a report? I mean, if, if, if $250,000 contract is approved and we don't, we don't vote on it, will we still get a report so we know what's going on?
We certainly could do that. It's not, I think change orders, any construction repair change orders, you would get reports on the way we've ordered it.
Does this actually include periodic reports?
Periodic reports, but just for construction repair. So if you wanted reports on other contracts, we could certainly bring those to you as well.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I mean, because we are ultimately charged with the responsibility, I'm not suggesting you should have to bring everything for the board to vote on. But I think maybe it's a consensus item or something like that, maybe a report periodically would be nice to, at least so we can say we know what's going on.
Absolutely. We'll be glad to do that.
We can include those in the superintendent's report.
Okay. That's fine. That's good. Okay. All right, so do we have a motion? We have a second. Any further questions?
We have an amendment.
Well, okay, you wanna vote on it? We need to vote on the amendment first. Okay, we have an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment as suggested by the Board Attorney, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we'll vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right. I have been asked to take a break, since it is, well, 7:05. We will take a break, hopefully not a long break, and then we will come back and we will finish up the agenda. Okay.